Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to call as Orange County Council Meeting of October 21st, 2019 to water. We're going to ask Councilman really be honest to give us a moment of thanks before we proceed.
Let us bow our head for a moment of thanks. Father, for this moment, for this time, we indeed thank thee for allowing us to assemble here. We ask that you bless each and every one who are assembled. Go with us, guide us, and direct us as we move through this moment in time and space. We ask that you give each and every one of us a sober, sane mind, so we will do the things that you will be pleasing in your sight. In the other best of ways in thy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mr. Orison. Again, we'd like to welcome you again to our meeting tonight. I hope each and every one of councilpersons have had the opportunity to read the meeting minutes of October the 7th, and if you have, I would entertain a motion and a second that those minutes be received as written.
What's the move, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ravenel, second by Ms. Fraser, that those minutes be received as written, all in favor, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed to it, ayes have it and a motions carried. Again, we welcome you and for those of you who may not have been privy to our meetings before, we have two sections of comment at the beginning of our meetings, one on agenda items and the other are public comments of other matters, meaning that if it's an agenda item, you may comment on that agenda, and if it has a public hearing on that item, then you will wait until that time to comment. And the other is that you could bring anything that you want before council to comment on the second portion. So I'm going to open the floor for public comments of agenda items. Hearing none, we'll close that and open the public comments of other matters. Anything else that you would like to bring before council, would you please state your name and the item that you would like to, or the subject matter that you would like to...
Good evening. I'm Darrell Beedenbaugh, and I happen here again and once again complaining about that nightclub, that strip club over in Chestnut Square Mall. I thought that agenda had been taken care of, but evidently it hasn't. I came by there this past Sunday, a week ago, 5:30 in the morning, and there it was. Raising all kinds of sand. And I heard on the street this morning that this weekend, there was four people shot over there. And that's just not good going on in the neighborhood. There's houses, hundreds of houses around that place. That place sounds like a public nuisance to me. I don't know what kind of club it is, and yet, people think they have to go and take a gun to go in there, that there's something wrong with it. That's just, that's just a hazard, a nuisance. And the people living around there, we entitled to peace and quiet as well as those people are, but you've got few people opposing that will against the rest of us. And I thought the majority ruled, not the minority. But we in the majority, we got no say-so about it, doesn't look like. But once again, I don't know what else can be done about it, but everything has found a way to get around it. The ordinance change, you know, it's just, it's awful. Just it. I don't know why anybody should be out at 2:00 in the morning in a public place disturbing the peace. And like I said, that's just, the rest of us suffering from a few. And I don't think it's right. I mean, why you got to go out there and start shooting people in a club? I don't know why people go to a place you think you got to be armed to go in. So I, I don't know. That's just my opinion. And I think, you know, a place like that has no place in this community. It ought to be shut down, haunted, business of all that concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beedenbaugh. Anyone else?
I'd like to say good evening to the chairman, because the chairman and the citizens of Orangeburg. My name is Demetrius Hardy. I come to you by way of Anniston, Alabama, and this is not so much a comment as it is just a greeting. I wanted to just share with you all how excited I am to be here in the city of Orangeburg. I am the new executive director of the Orangeburg County YMCA, and first day on the job was October the 9th. There's a lot that I've got to immerse myself in, but I am looking forward to serving the people of Orangeburg and Orangeburg County. I come to you again by way of Anniston, Alabama, where I served as the sports and aquatics director there for three and a half years, and prior to that, I worked part-time, and prior to that, I was a volunteer. So I am very much immersed in the YMCA way, and I believe that the YMCA is a viable organization in any city in which they exist. And again, I just would like to just share with you all how excited I am to be here in Orangeburg, move my family 300 miles away from home to be here. So I want to let you all know I am invested in this community and look forward to serving the people of Orangeburg.
Welcome. You and I have talked via email.
Yes, we have. Look forward to working with you very soon, Councilwoman. Thank you all, and you all have a great evening.
Welcome to Orangeburg.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Connie.
Any other?
Yes, Connie. God must have had some beautiful things in mind for his world when he made us. He gave you a warm smile to reflect his goodness wherever you go, and a strong faith to inspire others, and a kind and caring heart that was born to bless others with his everlasting love. Orangeburg County staff, these are some of the words that sums you up. We feel good about you for the invaluable support you provided to us during the South Carolina State University Youth Day activities. The awesome assistance and participation was beyond measures. Again, thank you so much, and I, we greatly appreciate your assistance. And at this time, I'd like to call the names of those persons who went way beyond to assist and help. And if you look at the screen, you will see the students there with their t-shirts on from the Edisto Drive Community Concerned Citizens and Okanite. And they were from Revlon School, and that group is from Brookdale. The Concerned Citizens of Edisto Drive took care of the expenses of the whole second grade class at Revlon School and the fifth grade class at Brookdale. So the kids had a wonderful time for Youth Day, and they got their t-shirts. So now let me call the names of all of the persons who participated and made this a great day for our youth in our community. Demetrius Williams, Lisa Williams, Audrey Asbury, and she's our auditor, Phalexia Schula, Vanette Green, Sharandre, I hope I pronounced that one right, Shad Renee Lee, Hercules Mack, and Mack is over at the Area Development Center on Sprinkles Avenue. And Marion Lord. Marion, you in the audience, please raise, no, stand, let's let them stay in. Okay, thank you. Sylvester Schula, Patricia, I thought I, please ma'am, stay in. She's one of the employees here as well. Thank you. Desiree Shavers, I didn't see her come in here. And Daiselle Shavers, that's mother and daughter. Student volunteers was Ashlyn Portee, and she's the daughter of Connie. Connie, you stand up as well. She's our pretty lady over there who does all of this graphics for us. Thank you. And again, I got to talk about Harold Young. You have not tasted chicken, hamburger, hot dog, and fish until you've eaten some that Harold Young cooked and prepared. He's a pro at this, and I'm quite sure he's going to continue doing it every year. Our students from these communities over at Brookdale and Revlon School, we all thank you very much for everything that you all have done to make this an enjoyable weekend, and hopefully some of these students will stay in Orangeburg and go to school at South Carolina State and class, another place of here in Orangeburg. Again, thank you all very much, and Harold, keep on doing what you're doing. We love you, and we love all of you. Thank you.
That's the sheriff, Harold. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
At this time, I must comment on something Mr. Beedenbaugh just commented. He is in my district, and I support him wholeheartedly. I don't see any sense in what took place. Was Sunday?
Not Friday.
Friday? What, what has the sheriff said, what has he done about?
We can't ask for the sheriff.
Mr. Beedenbaugh?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, I want to hear you.
Yes, sir. I'm a council, if you will, folks in attendance, most of you know me. Those that don't know Captain Carter, Joe Carter, been on the agency for 27 years. With regards to nightclubs in general, and I'll get more specific as to Club Atlantis on Chestnut, and then working with Attorney Haydel and Administrator Harold Young, we did amend, and the council amended the ordinance recently, and that addresses basically the alcohol issue and staying open after 2:00 in the morning. But what we are looking at now, and hopefully we'll work together with in the very near future, is some of these establishments become nuisance establishments. I will have myself pull records and stats for the council to look and study. I have one number tonight, it's 189. Since 2015, that's later, around December, 189 calls to that particular establishment on Chestnut. We deal with it at that time, but when you have a establishment with a business license and other licenses, it's not as simple as saying you're closed. It's not as simple as that. We try to address the issues as they come up, as to the issue which actually took place in the wee hour mornings of Saturday, to confirm for those, there were four people shot there Saturday. We have an active investigation to try and resolve that particular issue, but the number I just gave you of 189 is more to the point, I think, the comments from the gentleman earlier. I hope to be working in the very near future, myself and the sheriff himself, with Attorney Haydel and county administrator. We are addressing that. As I said, it's not as simple as you're a nuisance and we will shut you down. It's a little more complicated than that, but the sheriff is extremely intense by what happened Saturday, in light of historical records for the particular incident and other club environment type businesses in the county. So, Councilmembers, we are very, very aware and very motivated to address this issue in your district and for the citizens that live in that area.
The way I see it...
Yes, sir.
You cannot defy the law.
No, sir.
By violating the law. If something happened in Washington taking place down here, I think we better cut it out.
Yes, we agree.
Okay. There will be no 45s around here?
Yes, sir.
Not unless I carry one.
Let's hope it doesn't get that bad.
Yes, sir.
But it is being addressed with all of, everything the sheriff saw, sort of resources we can put at it. I personally reallocated officers to monitor and address criminal activity at these establishments until such time as we do make more permanent changes. It is being, it is being addressed, sir.
Thank you for your help.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Captain Carter, for your comments. Anything else?
Good evening. My name is James Sharpton, and I'm actually the owner of the business on Chestnut. And, you know, of course, what happened on Friday, you know, was, you know, unfortunate. But just like when the authorities arrived, the ATF, you know, was there as well, and they indicated that, they contacted the sheriff's office about a notorious group of people who had come to Orangeburg, they tracked them to Orangeburg, and they gave them a description of the vehicle they was driving, a description of these individuals, and be on the lookout, from my understanding. These individuals found their way onto that property. You know, we checked vehicles, we checked for weapons, all these things. From my understanding, these individuals were gang-related individuals who just simply got through whatever cracks that were set up in terms of to prevent, you know, this kind of thing from happening. And before, I guess the authorities could identify them on this property, they just started wreaking havoc. But it's my understanding that the ATF contacted the sheriff's office about these guys at 10:00 PM on Friday. And if we had had some notice or some community awareness, being that it was homecoming, and it was more likely these people would show up in this environment and any other environment, then, you know, we probably had, would have had a better chance of offsetting, you know, what ended up happening. Now, you saying 189 calls for this business to the sheriff's department, I mean, we would have to see those documents or whatever, because, you know, we have a security on staff, and they do everything in their power to prevent, you know, issues of every kind. So I'm perplexed about this 189 number. But like I said, it just seemed like there should be some communication and collaboration with law enforcement to help to maintain security and so on and so forth at any business, but especially, you know, these businesses that are more likely than not to have, you know, certain things to happen, whatever. But we did everything in our power to prevent anything like this from happening.
Do you think they came to support you, sir?
Sir?
Do you think they came to support you?
I think that because of the ordinance and that was created recently, and my comments, I think that it is a perception of that sheriff's department, that I'm against them or speaking against them. My concern with the ordinance was that it was simply not illegal ordinance based on the laws of the state of South Carolina. I, you know, I'm a law enforcement person myself, and I can't operate my business without the assistance of law enforcement, you know. I've worked my whole life being an example for people, for many, you know, and my track record speaks for it itself. It's not a situation where I'm trying to, you know, make a dollar or trying to put somebody in harm's way or anything like that, but to not get, you know, just support, just from a safety standpoint, then, you know, why are we not talking about that? Working to, to maintain the safety of the community? No, it's about, you know, kill this industry or kill this business.
Sir, I, I know he asked you a question, but the time is...
Yes, sir.
...to join us, we all, we do agree to the fact that we all want a full conversation later, okay?
I just want to make sure, we're not in business to protect any one person. This is to enforce the law.
I agree, and I think that we should...
Now, if you disagree with it, you can disagree.
Right.
Publicly, without fight.
I agree.
Now, we not, we not going to have a fight between law enforcement and you, and your supporters. I'll tell you right now. It won't, it won't be that kind of support at all.
I'm not following you, sir.
We not going to have a fight between law enforcement and your supporters. If that's, that's a part of your supporters, you better tell them to, you know, cut it out and go back home.
I'm still not following you. I mean, you talk about my supporters, then you talking about law enforcement.
Mr., would you all just continue that later after the meeting, if you want to get with him and find out exactly what he's talking about? I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Okay? Anybody else with more comments?
Yes, you know, I was reading my list here and looking down the list, and I inadvertently left off the chairs of the group who orchestrated and carried this wonderful thing out for those kids, and that was Deborah Frederick Elza. Deborah, I'm sorry, please stand up. You got to.
I just do whatever I can when I'm needed.
Good, and you were, you were needed and it was necessary. Angel Howell, is Angel in here? Okay, and Angel, those were the two chairs of the group who helped along with Harold and others with the county to make that weekend a wonderful weekend for the children and for the community. Again, thank you very much. We love you.
Thank you so much.
Kim. This is a follow-up. Harold, in our ordinance and in our regulations on business license, at what point does a business violate, I don't know, the business license and being pulled? There's certain criteria that are keeping...
It has more so to do with building codes and other things, but what the officer was referring to, we had started working on a nuisance ordinance that would create the ability when something is being nuisance that is defined within that ordinance, that is something that's affecting and plaguing the community, a nuisance ordinance would allow that to be revoked based upon the nuisance ordinance, and then they would have to show that they have made remedy of that to be able to open back, and that's, that's kind of where we hit it on the next step.
So basically, building permits now, I mean, building license right now is directly elected to...
It's fire codes, building codes.
Building code.
Things of that nature, and there's some...
It's building, not, not physically?
Yeah. Now, there may be some additional details, I have to go back and research, but for the most part, it's based upon that kind of stuff.
Terry.
Any other? Any others not real close, the public comment portion of our meeting and going to regular meeting? First item on the meeting is tonight's presentation from the community of Character Pack, our youth brothers, the chair lady of that.
Good evening, chairman.
Good evening.
Once again, I've made it back to county council meeting. It almost seems like I've been here, this is the first time for the new year, but I think I've been here one time other than this. So, again, I say good evening to Mr. Wright and council, to Mr. Young, our county administrator, to Mr. Lord, to Ms. Haydel, elected officials, department heads, Character Pack, citizens of Orangeburg County, and visiting guests. I bring you greetings from the Orangeburg County Community of Character Pack, and tonight we are here to recognize some of our finest that work for the Orangeburg County. And I am going to start with Mr. Henry Summers. And I realize I don't see him here, but if it's okay with you, Mr. Wright, I would like to take the time to let you all know what was said about these people, and because that's why we are here. But we want to congratulate Mr. Henry Summers. He was nominated for the Community of Character Pack Trait of Determination, and this was in April, the month of April, and his name was submitted to the pack by Sheriff Leroy Ravenel, and he had the following words of recognition to say about Mr. Summers. He said, "It is rare to find hard-working and unselfish people like you. You are responsible for the oversight of all county vehicles and climate maintenance, determined to ensure automotive needs are met with excellence and fairness. Your great sense of ingenuity and creativity were exhibited when you saved the county a tremendous amount of money, several thousand dollars, with one of the sheriff's vehicles by removing and replacing a top portion which was severely damaged. Your determination and creativity was exhibited. You take this same level of determination in all aspects with a listening ear for people. This includes attending county council meetings and concerned citizens meetings in Danes, South Carolina, to hear firsthand about concerns and addressing them. Senior citizens stop Sheriff Ravenel often to acknowledge the dedication, dedicated work of Mr. Summers. His life and dedicated dedication prove that what is impossible for some is definitely possible if you have a man like Mr. Summers on your side." We want to congratulate Henry for a great job, great recognition by coworker. Our, we must, Secretary Miss Connie Porte planning the luncheon for us, and Mr. Young is going to send us out to... Mr. Young, I just want to say right here, I am jealous. When we have our community of Character Pack back at school, we don't have no fried fish and no chicken, and... But y'all take notes, Pack members, we going to put this on the agenda, and we going to ask for the master chef to come forward. He's been serving us hot dogs and chicken. So I'm jealous, that's all I want to tell you. We're going to our second nominee, and I don't think this first, oh, this person is here. So Mr. Wright and Mr. Wimbley, y'all need to come down. Now, I want to say this young man has a very distinctive last name. I haven't been able to pronounce it yet, and I'm not missing it up.
Over my phone.
I know him personally as James, because my husband's name is James. So come on up, James.
James, we want to congratulate you again for being chosen by the Orangeburg County Community of Character Pack as a character employee for the month of June 2019, which is patience. Your name was submitted to the pack by Ms. Sherri Grubbs. She had the following words of recognition for you. Ms. Grubbs said you are a very easygoing person. You handle stressful situations with dignity and patience, and you do not lose your temper or snap off at anyone. She felt you deserved an award for patience, what a great recognition by coworker. And we are ready to present you with your medallion and your certificate. Thank you for doing a wonderful job.
Okay, well, James, you wearing all biceps. But the only thing is, I'm going to ask our former vice chairman, Ms. Smith, to come forward. Okay, my next honor is none other than council chairman, Mr. Johnny Wright, the honorable Johnny Wright. And Mr. Wright, we want to congratulate you once again for being chosen for the character trait of loyalty. Your nomination was submitted to the pack by Ms. Connie Porte, clerk to the court, council. Ms. Porte says she had the honor of serving you since 2016, and has observed your commitment to your office, your family, and to the citizens of Orangeburg County. Unless it was an emergency, you have never missed a county council meeting, a special call meeting, or the South Carolina Association of County meetings, where you served as second vice president. When giving speeches as the leader of Orangeburg County, you never take credit for yourself. One of the favorite quotes she loves to hear you say is, "It's a poor frog who doesn't praise his own barn." She has had the pleasure of listening to your stories about family and your career at the Naval Yard, but most of all, your years of service to the community. Listening, she can hear your devotion to everything you set your hands to do. She believes you are loyal, not because you hold the title as chairman of the Orangeburg County Council, but because it is in your heart to be committed in everything you do. One of the meanings of loyalty is if you are devoted to someone or some, something. She believes you are devoted to seeing Orangeburg County be successful on the forefront of economic, social, and eco-friendly partnerships. Colon, colon, power. Success is the result of perfection, hard work, learning from failure, and persistence is the reason she chose to nominate you for the, for the genuine character trait of loyalty, what a great recognition by coworker. We have also seen your face on our plasma screen, but we are ready to take you out for lunch, and you might have to approve the party, so we might eat a little bit more.
Can't be partial. If we give everybody else a little...
Do you mind if I add something?
Yes.
You know, when things get tough around council table, this is the one man that keeps it all together. He brings us back to where we need to be, and I really appreciate the opportunity to serve as a good friend.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate those words. I appreciate it.
We also would like to let you know that Mr. Young and Mr. Wright received the county-wide nomination as well. That would have gone to jail. Okay, well, thank you for the time.
Congratulations.
Okay.
Thank you also very much, I appreciate it, Mrs. Young.
You got to stay with Mr. Wright. Yeah, now y'all got to present the last person. And Ms. Cooper, you just stay there, don't go either right now. Okay, all right. Okay, our final and last award goes to Mr. Tyrone Washington. Tyrone over here with us? Yes, he is, come on down, Tyrone. We've had family picture taken before when we had these presentations. Wonderful one, yes.
Congratulations.
Okay, we want to tell y'all what was said about Tyrone, and Tyrone, we want to congratulate you again on being our winner for the character trait of respect, and this was the month of August. Your name was submitted to the pack by Ms. Niggy Brown, Ms. Tracy Green, and Ms. Nikki Jones. They said you have been a committed employee of Orangeburg County for ten years. You have remained loyal and dedicated to your position. You are more than a coworker to many because of your attention to everyone's concern and needs, and your faith is an inspiration to everyone around you. You strive to do the best in everything you do, and people love to be around you. Others can confide in you, and you go out of your way to help anyone. Respectful, supportive, trustworthy, sincere, dedicated, reliable, and committed are a few of the words which describe you. Your respectful manner, hard work, and loyal dedication ought to be recognized by the county and all of the people you help. What a great recognition by your coworkers. And we want to congratulate you again. We want to invite you to lunch when we have lunch, and like I said, there won't be any wine and dining, but just lunch. Just lunch, because we're going to have the councilman as chairman, so we have to know how to ask. Okay, congratulations. And we are just going to continue to do the work that's placed before us. We invite you all to make nominations, department heads, we invite our councilmen to make nominations. We are just waiting for them so we can present all of y'all. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, the brothers, and thank all of my colleagues here that serve with me, and also to staff, citizen, especially to Madam Clerk, thank you so very much for being that person. I would just like to say she is a wonderful clerk, not because she nominated me, but she did an excellent job, and I think all of us, all of us up here will contest to that. She has been an absolute godsend for us. She keeps us on track, she makes sure she reminds us about everything and all this. That's a big deal, because, you know, not everybody up here, but some of us are getting to be senior citizens, so, you know, we need that reminder. We appreciate that so very much. Thank you again.
Mr. Wright, can I have both?
Yes. I need to add one more thing. Just for the record, and, you know, all of our employees and stuff do phenomenal job. I know Mr. Summers is not here, but he does, you know, goes over and beyond, but Mr. James Ocarumpo has a significant story, because James came to Orangeburg as a student from Clapham that was an exchange student, and he actually stayed, and he is now an employee of Orangeburg County, and I think that's a great story, because it shows the tie and blend between the university and the community, and how you could come here, get a good education, and get a job. And so, that's a story that should be told.
All the pack members please stand. I didn't ask them to stand, we need some hardworking people, and your secretary, what about, thank y'all so much. And we call Mr. Lord a lot more than we call Mr. Young, but I know he gets the message.
I thank all of y'all for serving and what you do to make a difference, that makes a big difference.
Yes.
But you know, what Mr. Lloyd always tells me, he keeps it all laid straight, I don't know what he's saying.
We get them straight, because we can't find until we serve them.
Well, I guess he's outnumbered, so, you know. Anyway, thank you so very much, we appreciate that. And the next item on the agenda is ordinance and resolutions, and third reading on this ordinance, and it's an ordinance authorizing the purchase, acquisition, installation, installation and services of certain equipment, execution and delivery of all documents necessary to carry out the lease purchase, financing for sale, and other related matters. Mr. Young, for those who may not be familiar, would you just give a summary of what that's all about?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this is a lease agreement that is brought before you to furnish, guarantee equipment for the ambulances and EMS that serve our community every day so faithfully, and we found that we could get a better deal through the lease payment from, and have the stretchers and everything maintained at a better rate and a cheaper cost to the citizens of Orangeburg County.
Thank you so much. Counsel, did anyone have any questions about that? If not, I would please entertain a motion and a second for passes or third reading on that.
Move second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith and second by Ms. Frazier that we pass third reading on this item. All in favor, please notify by saying aye. Any opposes, ayes have it, the motion is carried. Second item is first reading, this is an ordinance to amend the text of the Orangeburg County zoning ordinance regarding Article Nine, administration part of it, application and required permits, and also Section Nine Five, application procedure for change or relief. And step number three is public hearing. Madam Clerk, you want to say anything about that, or everything's pretty self-explanatory?
I think it's self-explanatory, it just provides for a public hearing at the planning commission level.
Any questions from counsel?
So move, Ms. Kim.
Same. Moved by Mr. Wimbley, second by Mr. Orange that we pass first reading on this item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposers, ayes have it, motion is carried. And planning commission resolution and audits, and this is first reading on this one also, is to change the zoning designation of the following parcel of Cox Map Number Zero Three Six Two Dash Zero Zero Dash Zero Five Dash Zero Zero One, located at Garden Gate Road in Ucalville, Johnson Joe Davis from Forest Culture District to Commercial General District for the purpose of establishing a car dealership. And I want to comment, basically, that I didn't, my district has sent it back to the planning commission, and I think they approved it.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if we, as long as it's just a car dealership, there are some others in certain areas, outlawing like that, on Ucalville on Forty-Five, one off Highway Number Six, as long as they're just for that, and it's not other things that they're using for, or I guess some other things. I have to comment other than that. Any counsel person have any? If not, could I get a motion and a second for passing something? So, Ms. Kim. Same. Moved by Mr. Rattler, and by Mr. Hill Lister that we pass this ordinance, first reading, all in favor of it, please say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, ayes have it, motion is carried. Item number four, resolution, a loan resolution for the West Edisto Sewer, project phase number four, I'll hear it through the, Young, that you?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As in our meeting earlier, it was ironic, the Phase Four West Edisto is a project that we've been working on diligently for years now, and it started as a part of the overall West Edisto project. And there are things in life that you can't see down the road, and twenty-something years ago, when I were working on those projects myself, when that was my role, we had a lady from the community who came up to the podium and said sewer, sewer, sewer. That was the headlines, and it basically dictated that she was not going to stop coming until Edisto Drive got sewn. Well, twenty-something years later, that lady is Ms. Frazier right there, and now that is the next phase of the sewer project, where she is now a counsel person, and this is an important phase, because this Phase Four will allow us to take care of the sewer problems that we're having at Edisto High School as a part of the de-head issues that they've been facing. So, this is a, basically, a three and a half million dollar project, is, money is coming from USDA in the form of grant alone, and we are glad to have it, because it allows us to finalize the fourth phase of that project that will also bring additional sewer to other homes within that area. And this is a resolution that must be passed for us to be able to accept the funding. We met with USDA officials on today, and we talked through the project, and also gave them our gratitude for always being a stark supporter and a good help for the Orangeburg County community. A lot of people's lives has been changed through the funding that we receive from USDA, and this is an important piece of it.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Any questions from any counsel persons?
Yes, I got something to say, I got a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Harold. I'd like to say to the audience, for years, I would just come to the county council meeting and I would say, just plain old sewer, sewer, sewer. Sometimes I would just come and stand in the door, and Janie Cooper would look at me, and all I would say was sewer, 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 because we needed it. On Edisto Drive, we had several places there where people were still using outdoor toilets, and we needed sewer, sewer, so I dedicated my time. Three years, I came to every meeting, I refused to let up, and I wanted to remind counsel, we need sewer, so we finally got it. Now, we're just on one phase, and I hope and pray that we will continue, so that everybody in the county of Orangeburg will have sewer. And I will also continue saying sewer, sewer, sewer.
Thank you so very much.
The only difference is that, you sit up there and you got to pay for it.
We can look at that.
Yep, that's it. Any other comments? Thank you so very much.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add one thing, for the sake of the citizens' understanding the importance of this council. Orangeburg County has taken utilities to more areas in the rural area and in the municipal areas outside of, I mean, within Orangeburg proper, for water and sewer and other areas to broadband through USDA grants, and being aggressive in finding grant funds to be able to better the lives of the citizens of Orangeburg County. We still have a long way to go, still have some problems that we have to solve. We're aggressively working right now on a project in Northwood State to try to help those citizens out there as well, and so we understand that our citizens are our priority, and we're working hard to better their lives and their situation. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Young, Mr. Rattler.
I just got to say this, I see Ms. Barbara Williams out in the audit, and also the state, I'm assuming she probably saying the same thing, sewer, 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 but pray it hopefully is coming.
USDA is involved? It has to, does it have to be a certain income in that area to apply?
For the tariffs and impacts?
Yes.
That's CDVG.
What?
That's CDVG.
That's CDVG?
Yes, ma'am. Community Development Block Grant is derived per household when it comes to that. The USDA grant is about the area as a whole.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with income?
It does, but it's the whole area, not the individual house.
The whole area, okay.
Yeah, CDVG breaks it down, you have to qualify each house. USDA qualifies a census tract, so as long as the census tract is considered lower than moderate income, you can do projects within that census tract.
Did the county have to match?
Yes, ma'am. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars match goes towards that project, and that's provided through the capital project sales tax.
Capital project sales tax?
Yes, ma'am.
Fine move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Frazier, and second by Ms. Cooper Smith, that we pass the resolution for the West Edisto Sewer Project Phase Four. Item number five, official action. All in favor? All in favor, let's certify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, ayes have it. Sorry about that, Ms. Sewer, thank you.
Don't get excited.
Item number five is official action, and it's the, and the official action of the Orangeburg County Council authorizing entering into a lease agreement with Dutton Memorial and Recreation Association to sustain recreational program for the public. Administrator, perhaps kind of summarize that, we understand I read...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. For those who don't know, one of the most used parks in Orangeburg County is the Harmon Park, and that park derives from an agreement through the Dutton Association, where they approved to use that park as a recreational area. The county has a lease to that, and every county park you see, we either own it or lease it, so every so often, we have to renew the lease agreements with those parks to continue to serve citizens, and give them a clean area to have recreation. And I can tell you that Harmon Park, which is Ms. Cooper Smith's district, where she has been a champion of getting upgrades and other things to that, is one of the most used public parks in the entire county.
Any comments? This is not, could I get a motion on that?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, and second by Ms. Frazier again, that we pass this official action on the lease agreement between the park and the county. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, ayes have it, motion is carried. Thank you so much. Item six is the approval of the lighting contract with Tri County Electric Co-op for the I Twenty-Six Six Oh One Exit One Forty-Five Gateway Interstate and Ramp Squeak Lights. Mr. Young?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Orangeburg County is always evolving, and as citizens have seen, this council has pushed the limit as far as upgrading our community and getting us to the next level where we need to be. Sometimes you have that perfect marriage between beautification and safety when both of their common cores align. This is a situation where, for the sake of beautification, we upgraded the sign at the interest, and most people understand, that's been a beautiful asset to Orangeburg County, it's given us a positive spin as you come down the interstate. What our next phase is to put lighting on the Six Oh One area corridor bridge coming down, and also further down the retail and commerce area. The Sheriff's Department and administration, we work hand in hand and try to see what we can do to solve problems together. They came to us and said, part of the problem is when you go out to some of those areas, a lot of people leave out of those hotels and other areas, and they walk from, you know, business to business to business up and down that stretch. We want them to be able to see and have a good lighted path so that they can be safe as they go along that. So, this is a beautification project that is also a safety project, and one of our great partners is our Tri County Electric Co-op. We have worked together with them and Mr. Chad Lauter, and they have agreed to give us a break on helping with the installation of the lighting. What you have before you is our portion of the materials and costs, and they're going to work in a joint project with us, and we're grateful for the partnerships that we have with them. Citizens should know that months back, we had a groundbreaking at the new industrial park, that's a joint park, right off of Six Oh One, and I Twenty-Six that was created, joined with the Tri County Co-op. So, this is an approval for you, to approve the lighting project. The money for the project is coming from the Economic Development Set aside Fund, as well as capital project sales tax and accommodation tax revenue to keep the lights on.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator, and we appreciate your thorough explanation of these things, because those of us who, some of us who sit in front of the audience, and even some of us up here, do not always understand all the underlying things that goes on, and how much all this stuff costs. Everybody looks at things, but they're not always, they don't always know what's behind all of that. So, thank you so very much. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Young?
I think he said it, but I'm not sure. Did you say that we would be able to get a grant to continue to keep the lights on?
We would use accommodation tax revenue.
Accommoda, oh, the accommodation tax.
Most of the lighting is for the area of that commerce district with the hotels.
Got you, got you.
What's your second to pass the updates?
So move. Second.
Moved by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Ms. Frazier, that we pass this item.
That's also District Five.
Yes, ma'am, under District Five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the opposed to it, ayes have it. Item B is the sole source justification, I agree, area development, community was at, who was replaced with it there?
Yes, sir. Several buildings, and you'll be seeing a lot of these, one of the things we've done is we've really upgraded and improved the level of our cul-de-lit works and our buildings and grounds crews, and he's not here, but I have to give a shout out to Tim, Tim's last name, which is...
C. Gray.
C. Gray, no, sorry, it escaped me. He's the director of building and grounds, he does a phenomenal job of directing... He does a phenomenal job of directing these individuals to keep our buildings running. And we have done a overall purview of all the buildings and came up with the capital projects list of things that we're going to identify, that we're going to work on to keep our buildings in a functioning order, so that we don't let maintenance get away too far to cost the taxpayers more money. This is a roof situation, and it's a sole source bid from AMET Outdoor Solutions in an amount of one hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, and the commissioning services are also included in that.
Get a motion and second to pass this sole source justification, roof replacement?
So move, Mr. Chairman. Second.
Move by Mr. Hiller Livingston, second by Mr. Really B. Orange, that we pass it. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposes? Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you so much. Any comments from any counsel person before we ask for 19-10-10 wastewater treatment plant updates? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. The request proposal, FY 19-10-10, was requested to prepare for the wastewater treatment plant to update the plant structure located at Orangeburg County Wastewater Treatment Plant. The proposals were advertised in the county website and on bidnet.com. They were due in on October the 10th in 2019. The county received two proposals from GH Smith and Okane Construction Company. Local state NBA preference was given, the highest ranking, and recommended Vidna for this award is GH Smith Construction in an amount of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred dollars, and is recommended by the utilities and project manager, as well as the county procurement director.
You've heard the summary from the administrator. Any questions?
I believe we accept the bill. Second, Chief Smith.
Move by Mr. Wimbley, second by Mr. Rabinell, that we accept. Yes, all in favor, say aye. Any opposes? Ayes have it. The motion is carried. Is there any comments?
Yes, I have a comment. And I'd also like to say something I noticed when I was going through my notes about Dunton Memorial. And I have not heard that name in ages, because I think when I was in the second grade, I'm from Orangeburg, so I went to school at Dunton. So, that brought back a whole lot of memories to me, that building in years back. It's on Golf Avenue, if you all do not know where it is. It's right next to the John Matthews complex that they have on Golf Avenue, right behind Claflin University on that street and stuff. It was, I think, a five-story building there, if I'm not mistaken, and it was Dunton Memorial School, and that's where I went to school my third grade year. And I was happy to see that they didn't forget about the good old Dunton Memorial School, because that's where we went to school at back then.
I would entertain a motion and a second for adjournment. Thank you all for attending our meeting.
Second.
Move by Ms. Cooper Smith, second by Mr. Lloyd, that we stand adjourned. Y'all have a safe trip.